Good to go. All right, very good. That being said, we'll go live. All right, we'll call the meeting of the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one, meeting of the Dayton Town Council to order. Good evening and welcome to our final town council meeting for the year. Hard to believe. As you can tell, I'm not Mayor Jackson. I'll be reasonably approximating that role as Vice Mayor. As Mr. Jackson is not feeling well tonight, so we send our regards for him to make a quick recuperation. So I'll be filling in and as Ms. Lawrence mentioned, I will try to hold to his goal of ninety minutes or less of your money back. So very good. We'll keep things moving along tonight. We will again be conducting it both in person and via Zoom. So for those attending the, we will be hearing public comment only from those in attendance in person who have signed up to speak. With speakers limited to five minutes each, please note that the public comment portion of the meeting has been moved up in the agenda order. This will allow the public the opportunity to speak and not to have to stay for the remainder of the meeting if they so desire. So that being said, Ms. Hall, can I have a roll call before we go to the invocation and pledge?
Present.
Ms. Hoover.
Yeah.
Mr. Seward.
Here.
Ms. Dessa. Mr. Wall.
Here.
And Vice Mayor.
Present. All right, very good. For those of you so inclined, if you'll please stand and join me for an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I would just note that, thank you very much. During this majestic time of the year, let us give thanks and endeavor to be gracious and generous towards those of our neighbors, visitors, and family alike. Please allow us the true spirit of the season to guide us to conduct our business matters professionally and with the community in mind. Remembering those who may be experiencing difficult times, be they physical, emotional, socioeconomic, or otherwise. To those, let us provide them comfort, solace, and renewed optimism in this season. May we be thankful for the opportunity to live in this remarkable small town. And may we equally be thankful and appreciative for the opportunity to serve our neighbors. May everyone experience a very Merry Christmas and a very joyous New Year. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, for the record, he might just state that other people on Zoom joining us and ask. I would ask all council members to remember to talk into your microphone.
Yes. Absolutely, and welcome to those joining us via livestream here to the Dayton Town Council meeting. We'll move right along to the next order of business, which is the approval of the minutes from the regular town council meeting from November eighth. And the joint public hearing with the Rockingham County Board of Supervisors from December eighth. Look for a motion to approve both of those minutes unless there's any amendments.
I mean.
Moved by Ms. Mathias. Second by Mr. Walls. Roll call vote.
Hi.
Mr. Seward.
Hi.
Ms. Mathias.
Hi.
Mr. Wall.
Hi.
Hi. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Action item for tonight is the ratification of a resolution approving a boundary line adjustment with Rockingham County. This item was heard in public hearing at the December eighth, two thousand and twenty one meeting. Ms. Lawrence, any comments?
No, it was a joint public, a joint public hearing with the county. We, the county did ask for our approval before they voted. But we would like to go ahead and ratify that and have it in our minutes as well.
Very good. Seeing that, seeking a motion to ratify the resolution before us. Moved by Mr. Walls, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Seward. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hall.
Hi.
Mr. Seward.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Wall.
Hi.
Hi. All right, motion carries. Very good. And now we'll get to our part of the meeting, a new section here, moving up the public comment here. And we will give Ms. Deb Crank the opportunity to present. Ms. Crank, you're the only one who is signed up, but have at it. Welcome. Oh, and if you could, yeah, speak in here, you can use the microphone.
My name is Deb Crank and I reside at three sixty-three College Street, Dayton. I want to thank each of you and please pass this along to your teams for the street cleaning prior to our small town celebration. That was a huge success. It was nice to see the streets all nice and clean. Please keep visiting with our merchants. They really appreciate it. Additionally, the parade was a huge success and the merchant group will work to provide additional support next year for candy. Because of the counseling of other communities, I think we were bombarded. I was not at it, but my husband and my sister both said it was quite big and they were sharing candy amongst the kids down their way. It hasn't been talked about yet, but please support the additional officer that's going to be talked about tonight or at any time. We could always use at least one more officer in our town just to keep the level of noncriminal activity that we currently have. Then lastly, please consider informing residents when you're going to survey their property prior to survey. No one likes to see those orange ribbons on both corners of our property and on their fence and a twig with a ribbon. And unfortunately, it was the day before Veterans Day. And so Angela did get back with me quickly that evening and then we spoke on Friday. But when I saw it, I thought it was a joke with the kid with the twig because I hadn't noticed the other corners of my property being surveyed. And when I got home, Rusty was in the yard, not so sure if he didn't think I was selling the house out from under him. And so it wasn't until Angela was able to get back in the office and let us know that it was actually the town survey. And so when you're at ground zero and your neighbors aren't and then it's King Street, but then the corner wasn't, you really didn't understand. And since then, Angela's Spain and Justin. But if you could do like the city of Harrisonburg and knock on the door. And if I'm not there or the resident's not there, just throw a door hanger that says we're surveying for, you know, for the public interest. Because we understand that you got a survey, but it's not fun when you come home and see orange ribbons. And actually, I took the one off the fence because I thought that was very inappropriate to be putting on my fence. And the other one was on a twig, so I kind of thought it was a joke until we saw the other one. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
I think she had, I think she still had a couple of minutes left now. Thank you very much, Ms. Crank. Appreciate that. All right, that, Ms. Crank was the only one listed to speak. Was there anyone else, though, who wanted to join? All right, seeing no takers, we'll move right along into staff reports. Ms. Lawrence for the town manager report.
Sure, my report starts on page eighteen of the packet. We did receive the full bid package for the water plant on Friday. Jennifer and I will wait with the engineer on Wednesday morning. So that he can answer our questions on this very technical plans and specs. They have B D H simultaneously and B H will be reviewing them. We've done a few other things with B D H, but for the most part, it's still moving right along. The attorney did get me today that form for the, for the procedures for the Ag Forests will district and I just need to have a conversation with the jurors about some other issues, but that's to say everything's moving along the way that it should. That I have spoken to both the infrastructure committee and their committee and members of the finance committee about the financing through B D H and the timing of the project and all of that. And there's no action to be taken this month, but just an informational thing. If there's any action to be taken, we, we still expect bids to go out very soon. And for them to be due mid-January, they'll be advertised in the paper and on other websites and things. We do have contractors who are interested in that project and are waiting for the package. So we have until February to, to talk a little bit more about the B D H finance package, but I'll keep you updated on that as we move forward. I too want to thank everybody who participated, paid it in the parade. There were numerous council members who wrote on our first time float, at least first time in a long time that we did a float and staff spearheaded that and designed it and built it. So appreciate everybody working together. I know I say this almost every meeting, but to have a staff that works together, not one person said, that's not my job. Susan, our treasurer, without decorating the love sign with Krista, our community development person, our public works, our water department, the police, everybody worked together so well to try to get everything decorated. If you haven't been down yet and those that are watching to South Park, the lights are beautiful. High wind days, sometimes they're laying down. We did get them put back up a couple of times now, but we also have a Santa's workshop that Maggie spearheaded that after the parade, Santa was very generous with his time and stayed until every last kid got to talk to Santa and the Santa's workshop. But I mean, if people haven't been down, I encourage them to go down. It's a great special photo op opportunity. I'll talk about the wayfinding signs and the seal when I get to my items for consideration, but we do have the, the task force has been working on the wayfinding sign for many months and hopefully we have a final design for our sign, a final concept design. Anyway, I do have numerous items for discussion and consideration. I will just mention, I did talk to Ms. Crank on Veterans Day or emailed back with her, sorry. That survey, just so council knows, we'd been working with that surveyor for months and did not get a heads up that he was coming out. There were two flags on College Street or I only saw two, but I think maybe you had taken yours down. Yeah.
There were, Mark Martin had one in front, middle of his yard. I call it the Lambert House had two and then King Street had one.
So that the surveyor needed some pins that he could find in order to know where, how to start the survey. So he took some in front of the dentist office and some in front of the cranks and other places and then surveyed King Street. Mr. Lowe was, the adjacent property owners were notified that they were surveying King Street. We just didn't know they were going to put survey flags up and leave them up on other properties on College. So if we, if we know about that ahead, we certainly would would and will ask the contractor next time to give us a.
They are still there, but I'm assuming they're still working.
On your street or on King Street?
On my property, yes, that's the.
Okay.
I just assumed they were still surveying.
I did get a call from the surveyor. He's still doing some deed research. I thought that they were down, so I will double check and make sure that we can take those down. We want one on King Street, obviously, to stay up until the projects, until he's completely done with his research. But those were just to mark the endpoint so that he could find the right distance. On each nineteen, there's numerous items for discussion or consideration, so I'll just start at the top. The town code, as you know, we've been working with municipal for quite some time and they have completed the recodification project. And they did send us an ordinance that needs to be approved to just adopt the recodified code. They have moved some things around. They clarified some things where, where we were in conflict with state code. They clarified, they did not make substantive changes. So, and in fact, we had talked to the attorney. There's a couple of things, we've been making notes of a couple of things we need to bring back to you that probably need to be revised in the ordinance, but we didn't want muddy the water. So what they've done is reorganized, recodified, brought it up to speed. We did not bring that ordinance to you tonight because you didn't have time. We just got the electronic copy like Friday. So it's a big file. I don't know how many people want to read three hundred and ninety-seven pages of the code. We will send it out to you.
I know, this is what they changed.
Well, most of what they changed were just there's, there would be a huge list and that's the other reason we didn't send it out. Krista, do you want to?
The only changes that were made were just changes to bring in online state carried and bring things up to date.
And I've reviewed those. In other words, there's a thousand changes, but most of them are kind of technical, reorganizational phrasing type changes. And it's not an overhaul of policy decisions that would be easy to provide in this.
There were lots of footnotes of them just asking, making sure some of them were just cleaning up some language. A lot of it was moving things around to where it made more sense. But we, we can't post it, the searchable online electronic copy on our website until after you guys approve the ordinance, but we can send you a Dropbox file or something that they could get into, or we could furnish it to you on a flash drive or something if you prefer that. We can't print the whole thing. We do have printed copies here if you want to check a printed copy out and take it. So. But I just, I wanted to give you a month's head notice that there will be an ordinance to approve and we'll send that out ahead of time to just let Krista know if you need a written copy, a flash drive or a Dropbox. And Dropbox, if you haven't ever used it, it'll come to you with a link. You don't have to have Dropbox yourself. Still let you open it. All of that stuff, so.
Great.
And then parking hours and parking, as you know, for some time, about a year and a half ago, the council approved posting signs about who can park in the park and all that stuff. Then we delayed posting those signs because of Mill Street project. We wanted to make the parking lots available for the dentist office and others whose parking was impacted. Sometime we have heard from some people that they wanted us to reconsider a variety of different topics, the hours of the park as well as who can park in the parking lot. So the committee did meet last, the joint committee meeting of the police and the parks recreation and beautification met last week. They asked if the committee wanted to meet with the residents of Duck Park, so we scheduled that for tonight at five o'clock. And and I'll let Robert, there's no action required on the council tonight. This is for information. There will be action asked next month or whenever. We can work out a good solution for that. So I'll let Robert report on the rest of that tonight and his report. An item for consideration that we would like action on tonight is that is on the additional police officer. The town was notified that we did not receive the cops hiring grant, which was what the budget was contingent on for the cops, for adding that sixth officer. We received notice that we wouldn't get that. On your desk, you have a staff report. And I'll just run through it since you didn't have time. It's basically the same information that you've received in the past, but police chief is respectfully requesting that you consider the hiring of a sixth officer without the grant. If the council also chooses to do that, we'd like to do that tonight and get action to approve it, knowing that you will have to come back and amend or adjust the budget in the coming months. But, and the reason would be that we have advertised for quite some time. We have interviewed candidates. It's very likely that we may, at this point, given the competitive nature and the lack of viable candidates, that we will need to put somebody through academy in order to fill that position. And that academy starts January third. So there is some urgency in that we, the next academy doesn't start until July. So it would be a long wait. And just so that you know, academy is a twenty week program. And then there's about three months of field training where they're in a car with their field training officer or officers. And there's a whole list of requirements. So it takes some time to get them to where they could be a certified officer on the street by themselves. So.
Officers without having to go there that aren't interested in the job.
Can you speak into the mic? I said, there aren't any officers other than sending somebody to an academy that was interested in it?
So. Can we get, Chief, would you mind a microphone there for those who participate? Not that your booming voice needs that, but thank you.
No, we have had interest. The problem is, is that right now with the current environment. Just giving an example, we had an officer that was interested to come. He was coming from a really busy area. So I suggested he come do a ride along. So they did two days ride alongs and he said he was still interested in the position.
And we interviewed him.
Yeah, and he went back to his sheriff at the time and the sheriff gave him what he wanted to keep. So the problem is a lot of agencies are giving people what they want to keep them.
Yeah.
Because it's easier to keep what you have than it is to bring on new people because, you know, it's harder and harder to find out. I talked to the chief in Stanton City today. They normally have about forty to fifty applicants for each process. They got eight.
It's bad.
So it's, it's not for a lack of trying. It's, we're all pulling from the same pool of candidates. And those coming from other areas are being given what they want to keep them. So.
So then the determination of who to hire and whether they have to go through academy or not would be the police chiefs. If you approve the budget of item and adding the sixth officer. I'm just letting you know why we asked for it so quickly without giving you a whole lot of warning. We did have, like I said, the police committee did meet and we did talk about this and then we needed to go back and do some more research. So just going down the bullets, to date, we've.
I do have a question. And if this isn't right, please just say you can, we can talk whatever it is. If we send them to the academy, is there something that will keep them here for a certain period of time or?
I can address that. Yeah, so every, most localities, if they put somebody through, and I have not talked to the attorney, have a three, a three year three year contract that's prorated. So if they're only here for a year, then we would prorate because we do have to pay them salary while they're in academy. We have to furnish them with equipment. So you, you construct a contract, most are three years. The last look at it, we changed it to three years after you complete your field training. So it's really almost a four year contract.
Can we put a stipulation in there that if they don't stay, they have to pay back the fee for?
That's, that's what I'm saying. That's what they, that's what the contract says, is to prorate. So if he's been out in the field and done a year's worth of work, then he doesn't have to pay everything back. He has to pay two thirds of it back. And you, in the contract, you list what the salary is, what the equipment costs are and stuff before he signs. And I, I trust that.
Come up the right way.
Yeah, and trust me, I don't, I'm pretty hard on trying to find people. Any little thing that I don't find that would be appropriate for a police officer, especially for the town, that it wouldn't be hired. So you can trust that I would do the right thing and make sure I get the right person to work out.
The only reason I ask a question is with the environment now, everybody's looking for people, you know.
Yep.
Not very well could be if somebody got certified and decided to go to Harrisonburg because they're paying a six thousand dollar sign down bonus that they could afford to pay outside the contract and then we'd be stuck. But we also have a better environment. So yes, the contract is part of that. And, and yes, it's also written in there that whether it's by their choice or they terminate them for some reason.
Thank you. I was distressed that you had to go for a grant when Bradford and I were on the meeting with the governor. For the funds that we got, the first thing he said that the money's actually for is our first responders. So to me, anything that you had on the list, dude, you should have had. Seriously. I appreciate you trying to get the grant because it would have saved us money, but we have part timers here that aren't from this area. They're not, they're not like the other officers and they don't act the same way. They're a little abrupt. I've had issues with them when my mom was alive and I've talked to you about it. You'll always have my vote for a cop if you get rid of them.
Appreciate them. Assistant Chief Trout, Ms. Lawrence, any?
Yeah. Yeah, some of those funds are, are one time only funds and this would be a commitment to long term purchasing equipment, vehicles, that kind of stuff. So I just want to make sure you're aware that there is an expense now to a permanent full-time officer. Today, and I was asked for information, to date, we've spent approximately twenty-two thousand dollars on part-time and overtime budget for the PD. We're almost a half a year, halfway through the fiscal year. So at this rate, we would spend about forty thou, forty-five thousand by year end. And some of that is the DMV grant and some is covering shifts for people who have been out sick or because we, or short staffed. So the complete cost of a full-time officer, including salary benefits and equipment totals about seventy-five thousand dollars. Depending on the starting salary and stuff, and that doesn't include the additional vehicle that we're hoping will be half paid through the grant that we applied for. So there, it is more expensive to have a full-time officer. However, as I said, on another bullet point, that the dedicated full-time officer would have more commitment to the community, would have an opportunity to get to know the businesses and residents better.
If, if we could just let this, if we can let Ms. Lawrence finish real quick and then we'll take discussion.
Yeah. Six officers would allow two teams basically to work together, two people on two teams with the lieutenant overlapping where, when he can, so that he is supervising both shifts and not just one, but he would also be the first one to fill in for people if they're sick or if they need to take P T O or if they're at training. So that the chief does understand, we have talked and talked and talked about the fact that he would have to be much more flexible and adaptable on the scheduling to limit overtime and to have people come in on shifts that they normally wouldn't work to cover for somebody else. And everybody would have to be more flexible. Because obviously, if we're paying this kind of money, we can't afford the kind of overtime and part-time that have been budgeted in the past when we didn't have a sixth officer. So he does fully understand that. We are over budget already in the overtime and part-time, but that's because we're under budget and the full-time salary, because we've had two people have to leave under no fault of our own. So the staff recommendation, the police chief respectfully requests approval of the sixth police officer. My recommendation, I support the additional officer position. If the twenty-four seven coverage at council has set was a priority in the past and community relationships and commitment of the officers is a council priority and if council deems that additional expense prudent, I just, my job is to make sure you understand the fiscal impact on. And getting back to I was going to get back to one of the points, but I forgot what it is now. But anyway, so if you so choose, we would need a motion to approve the addition of a sixth officer. That would be a one or two, depending on certification status. With the understanding that the budget would need to be adjusted or amended for such.
Before we entertain that discussion or motion, Ms. Hoover is Chair of Police Committee. Did you want to offer any insight on your considerations before we take questions?
No, I think Ms. Lawrence covered the majority of what was discussed during our meeting this past week. I, I did ask for a recommendation from staff just so that we could have a full picture of what it was that we were agreeing to. I think, you know, based on talks with the chief, based on the needs of our community, it seems like this is, this is something that our community feels is important to have that twenty-four seven coverage and getting by with the part-time officers just is not, is not good for our community. So I think, yeah, I think the, the staff recommendation is, is in line with what, what needs to happen.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hoover. And any questions for Chief Trout or Ms. Lawrence?
I have a question, like, so I can go to the police academy, come out as a brand new person and make seventy-five K.
No, no, seventy, that includes all the equipment.
He's going to get a lower salary, right? He's like brand new, so it wouldn't be, that is, is expensive.
No, the whole seventy-five thousand, that includes the salary, the B R S, health insurance.
Equipment.
Yeah, the equipment's a one-time purchase, so you can deduct a little bit from that, but that includes everything an employee gets.
Yeah.
I'm on the police academy, dude.
Right.
Yeah, no, it's not.
That's your new job.
No, we don't make that much.
That's crazy.
At the fight and, and tax.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Social Security, all that kind of stuff.
I was like, you think if he's from, from just fresh out the academy, he'd be a little cheaper.
It's, it's the total payroll expense. It's not the, yeah, or equipment and yes.
Salary and benefits.
So what's he get as a salary?
It depends on certification level. If it's a new person.
I mean, I'm just saying, he's brand new spanking out the academy. What are y'all offering?
We'd have to look into.
It'd be somewhere between forty, until he gets through academy and then forty-five or something like that.
Frank, I'm like, I need to lose weight and go, go to the police academy.
Very good. Any other, any other questions for Chief Trout or Ms. Lawrence before, otherwise I'll entertain a motion, motion to approve the addition of a sixth officer, depending on classification, certification says, understanding that the budget will need to be adjusted or amended at the January meeting. So Ms. Estes, I have a second. Second, Mr. Walls, roll call, please, Ms. Hall.
Ms. Dessa. Mr. Seward.
Hi.
Mr. Wall.
Hi.
Ms. Hoover.
Hi.
Ms. Mathias.
Hi.
Vice Mayor.
Hi. All right, unanimous, motion carries. All right, thank you. Hi, all right, unanimous, motion carries, all right, thank you, but Ms. Lawrence.
So um, moving right along, number four on my items for discussion or consideration is a special use permit signage at the museum. As you know, for a year or longer, we've been working on a wayfinding program, um, encouraging. Uh, and one of those is we, we were informed by VDOT and the consultants when they did their initial study that there were some signs that weren't in compliance. Uh, we have allowed um, Silver Lake Historic District and Rock Town History to stay on that intersection, they were permitted through us and permitted through VDOT, um, for the big signs that they have there, but it's in VDOT informed us that they can't keep their big signs there if they want to be on the wayfinding signage program, of course, they'll get more signage all the way through to their designation if they're on the wayfinding sign, so they would like, well, Silver Lake Historic District and Rock Town History um, have an interest in moving their signs, plus Rock Town History has rebranded and they need a new sign anyway, so before doing their sign, we talked to them, um, and they talked to us and they would like to move us, have a sign right there by their parking lot at the entrance of the museum that's bigger than what, right now, they just have a temporary sign, but um, the only sign they have right now, because it's a residential area, is a pretty small sign up close to the building and you don't even know you're at the museum or the welcome center or visitor center. Um, so anyway, um, we would like them to move their sign, they'd like to move their sign, but in order to do so, because they're in a residential district, a sign the size that um, they need is not permitted in a residential district unless there's a special use permit, so we would like action tonight to be that the council refer to planning commission, that um, special use permit and also because we would like to incentivize this and clean up that corridor and get it, we would like um, the council to include in that motion that they would waive the special use permit fee and consider that as a donation to the Rock Town History. That's nice. Um, so that they don't have to pay for that fee, uh, we still will have to advertise, so there will be some expense and that's why we charge a fee for that particular permit because it has to go through public here, um, but we'd like to not charge them for that.
And before I, I, I offer any discussion, I do want to just make on this matter, just do a personal disclosure here, uh, as I do sit on the board of trustees for Rock Town History, I will refrain and abstain from uh, any discussion or a vote, even though there's no financial interest here, just to avoid any uh, conflict of interest, but I will certainly entertain any motions or questions that uh, council or council has on staff.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's nice to wave the fee.
Great.
Well, then we would need a motion to refer that.
I would like to make a motion to refer this to what the planning commission you said?
Refer to planning commission for consideration and to waive the fee as a donation to Rock Town History.
Very good, all right.
The museum.
Second, second by Mr., okay, majored by Ms. Estes, second by Mr. Seward, uh, I'm, I'm understanding we do not need a roll call here, it'll be just uh, all those in favor.
Hi, hi.
All opposed and all abstain.
So the next issue I do not need council action on, but I wanted to make you aware that um, certainly there are no streetlights in the Dayton West subdivision, our, our town code requires streetlights in the subdivision, but the plat was approved by the town way back in two thousand five or so. And the plat did not have streetlights on the plat that they signed off and approved, however, on the other side, the, the developer also signs off that they'll follow all the ordinances. Uh, unfortunately, all the uh, utilities have been put in, the sidewalks are in, the streets are in, there's no good way to go back and retrofit any type of regular streetlight, we have looked at every option, uh, because of VDOT regulations, the fact that they don't own easements, the lots are smaller than they typically are, it's R two with special conditions, so you'd have technically, if you followed all the regulations, um, a streetlight six feet from somebody's front door, which is not a good solution. So the best solution that we came up with uh, would be, well, the two options, one is not to go ahead and bring back to council that you would waive them having streetlights in, or to put a limited number of um, streetlights there, but they would be solar lights and the catch is if they're solar lights, um, so the regular streetlights right now, we pay for the street, we pay Dominion or Shinano Valley Electric Co-op every month for a utility bill for every street light in town and in exchange, they come in and replace the bulbs and do whatever they do, um, when we report an outage or whatever, in this situation, because it would be a solar light, it would be upon the town to maintain those lights, which basically is spraying down the solar panel about once a month and then when the batteries or lights fixtures, anything go wrong, the town would need to replace that. My understanding and Robert can probably give me the town information that everything lasts at least three to five years, probably longer, um, so um, because we've never done it before and because we're, we would be agreeing if they put them in to maintain something long term, I wanted to get a feel from council, I don't need action, but I want to see if there's any reservations on that.
And I'll recuse myself since I'm actually helping the developer with the, so.
Has, has there been any comment from the residents that they would like to see streetlights in that neighborhood?
So that's why, that's what drew our attention to it, somebody did contact me, one of the residents up there, it's very dark in that neighborhood, it's pretty dark even in the other new neighborhoods with streetlights, but um, um, it gets really dark, especially up on the hill where there's no other development around at all, um, so somebody did bring it to me, that's when I looked out and then sent an email to the developer saying, when are you going to put the streetlights in? It's the first time anybody had approached him. So yes, and then when we were out there with the developer one day, just kind of looking at what some of the alternatives would be, a resident walked out and asked what we were doing, because we're standing right in front of her, just doing it in her yard. Um, and we mentioned it, and she said, yeah, she, she'd really like to have a streetlight, but then when I said, what if your homeowners association fee went up for you to pay for the maintenance, you know, because that was the other option, is turn this over to the homeowners association. Right now, there is not an active homeowners association, but once they build up enough houses, they have to turn it over. Um, that doesn't seem to be a viable option, um, either, I think it would probably be better, so we have not pulled all of them and we decided at the committee that um, that might open up a whole nother box, or it's because some people might want them in some, the solar lights are not going to be as bright as a streetlight, so it shouldn't interfere with anybody's indoor light shining in their bedroom window or whatever, but it would, we would have one right near the entrance sign at the intersection where you turn on, we would have one, there's some common area on the right hand side that doesn't have enough room for a house, so closer up to where the houses start, there would be one and then one at the circle up at the top of the cul-de-sac, um, in the middle of that, there's room to put those three lights and that's really what we're talking about. Our ordinance, as you know, as our reporter last month, does not say how many lights, what the brightness is, how far apart, it just says one sentence, streetlight or. So we'll be bringing that back to you as you know, also in February, so.
Is there a way to try it out there and then spread it throughout the rest of the town to switch over out? I love solar, I'm like, we were talking on the phone tonight too, we were going to come to you and ask if you'd have this company go and do a presentation on solar power for the public to hear, to try to get some people to convert in the town as well.
Yeah, give me, send me that information, if he has it, or who has it?
Robert, I can't.
Yeah.
Uh, Robert's got it, okay.
Yeah.
That would be good, uh, timely too, I know, uh, well, I know we, the last meeting, we already referred uh, discussion and consideration to the planning commission at the next meeting, so uh, I'll definitely Ms. Hall and I'll definitely be looking into that a little bit further in January, so.
Um, there's a problem as with everything else, the supply chain issue, so I probably this may already be installed anytime soon, but just wanted to hear if there are any red flags I need to be aware of since we would be taking on a new maintenance, then we don't really have a truck to get up there, but I'm assured it's only a twelve foot pole and we can get a ladder or something.
Adam can shimmy up there, right? Adam, Adam can shimmy up.
Yeah, all, all of our guys in public works love heights, they are.
There you go.
When I said that.
Yeah. Very good, any questions or concerns for Ms. Lawrence or?
All right, we'll continue to proceed. And then finally, um, I, I just wanted to also run by, it's not on this list, we have several items that are surplus items that we'd like to get rid of, none of them are still being claimed, um, and the um, inventory for the auditor in terms of assets, but um, there's several, there's probably six or eight metal duffs. Um, they were in the police officers' main area, they took what they needed downstairs when they moved, there's four up there, there's a couple more there. I'd like to put them out for either free, free cycle or something, put them out, let people come pick them up, they're old metal duffs, I don't think we're going to use here anymore, there's some artwork that nobody wants, it's been sitting back in the back room, we had offered to give that to Sadie Rose next time they have a yard sale, if they want to sell that, um, it's a nonprofit here in town. Um, I just want to make sure you guys don't, oh, and then there's um, probably about twenty of these chairs with fabric that's ripped, they got dry rot and they're ripped, when we stacked them up during COVID, completely shredded, they're in another room, we haven't thrown them out, like, like to go ahead and throw them out as well. I just want to make sure you guys are good with that.
Everyone.
None of that equipment's still on the audit list, right? The depreciation on the system.
Okay. All right, we've got head nods. Yes.
I just want it noted in the minutes that I.
Absolutely.
Have that. And then um, on page twenty are the updates on the capo projects, um. Oh, let me.
This, yeah, I was gonna say, Ms. Lawrence, if we want to bring, there's one item for consideration from, yeah. So I was gonna say from community development too.
So also on your desk, yeah, I was going to bring up the sign program, community development, but I'll bring it up now since I'm doing all the reports. Um, on your desk is also the approved design concept for the sign, and believe me, and Bradford's on the task force, um, Krista sits in other meetings, and Adam sits on, and then representatives from downtown business, um, Dayton Market, Cheryl, um, the museum, Fort Harrison are all on the task force, we have been through many iterations of signs and this was the final design concept that incorporated a lot of different things, so the green and, and um, off colors are to represent the valley. It incorporated our logo with the buildings that we have on the logo. Um, and this was the base that the committee decided. I'm really showing this to you because last month, I brought up the town seal, Bradford asked if we could incorporate the new signs in with the town seal, so you also have a sheet that has the town seal that was presented to you last month. And then the best attempt we could do is incorporate the valley kind of signage in there, the problem is, um, with the black and white copy on the seal, which is the left bottom of your page, when Maggie do the, the black and white copy, you can see that the white and black of the buildings would interfere with the white and black of the, of the valley, um, and it, it didn't show clear, so she had to move the valley kind of thing up, which then make them around mountains. We all in the office still prefer the two on the right hand side that we would use um, black and white when we need to and color when we can afford to. Um, so um, the recommendation, the chief very much wants to order his patch. So I told him I would bring it back, we didn't know that we were going to have the final design at the last minute, um, and we didn't know that they would, whether we would get it electronically by the time.
Yeah, I need to make bumper stickers so I can put one on my car.
Mm-hmm.
We could, yeah, I would rock that, I would pay for that.
Yeah.
I love those stickers.
The, the one on the right.
The two on the right, the color and the black, white, they're the same logo, ones that color, ones that are black and white, we could use them interchangeably.
Yeah, I think it incorporates some elements from the signage and yeah, I, I don't like the super rounded.
Yes, I will concede it, the, it, it morphed into something I don't think I envisioned.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there you go, I, I'll concede, I'll accept that it was, I, I would just ask it, is it possible, just, I don't know, just maybe a small, no, just uh, if we kept the, the, the design on the right, just to incorporate, I kind of like the blue uh, oval, you know, or actually just incorporating the blue around the uh, you know, the outer ring, yeah, for the, yeah, and then just.
Yeah.
But that may be where.
Both of the rings or just one of them?
Oh, I was just thinking, I mean, actually color in where it's white.
Yeah.
Basically, if you take, yeah, sorry, sorry, yeah, yeah.
So switch the color with the letter.
Yeah, so change the light, right, take the letter, the, there you go, pop it on there, so move the outer ring from.
From this part to there.
Yeah, but keep, and keep it white inside, does that make sense? All right. All right, now I'm going to ask Krista, Susan. All right, sounds like we have consensus.
Uh, so we do actually need a motion.
Oh, we got one for you. Are you ready to approve it or do you want to see it with the blue?
Oh, Wes.
Visualize.
Are we okay?
Yeah. Whenever I'm ready to approve, I would suggest a.
All right. Motion to approve with the amendment that we suggested with the blue ring.
I moved.
Mr. Walls, second by Mr. Seward. I guess we could just do, do we need a roll call now, okay, we'll just do, all right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Getting things done, all right.
I, I really hope that's lost in my report.
Yes, Ms. Lawrence, did you, there is one other item that uh, Ms. Roche had added as an item for consideration, do we want to just wait till we get to economic development report?
Oh, the fee thing?
Yes. Are you, no, no, go ahead, you want to do it now, let's knock it out.
I know, we can do it when we get to her report.
That's fine then.
I have a question, I have a question.
So then we'll have that item later.
Angela, did we ever get the poles, the light poles and the electric to the boards down at the greenway? Remember Dale and I pressed that to get the, the, the wall, the blocker walls?
It's obviously not done for Christmas, we have had electrician go down.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know if y'all got to put lights up or not.
No, we didn't get to do Christmas lights this year, but we are still.
Because we even gave you extra money for like lights.
We didn't, that wasn't included.
It didn't go in?
Uh, there is money for the greenway and then capital program this year, and we're obviously not extended on other stuff.
When do you think the pole lights might go up?
Well, the, the, um, and I did talk to Mr. Rohr after you suggested that and he's fine with, with um, that. Uh, we also need to do the remainder of that black steel fence for security, for safety reasons, so I'm waiting for on the bid for that.
Okay.
Um, so that we know.
I just knew we were waiting after the Mill Street, but I figured Adam's not building a water plant, so. You know.
Okay.
So I was just wondering if it got done, because that was like back beginning of the year, it's cool, thank you.
Yep.
Very good, all right, any other questions of Ms. Lawrence? If not, I think we're, the next few reports, uh, don't believe have any action items, but we're happy to hear them, so Ms. Smith, treasurer and financial reporter.
Hi, Vice Mayor and Council, you have the treasurer's staff report and financials for a period ending November thirtieth. Um, a couple of updates, the real estate tax uh, payments received as of Friday were one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty six dollars at ninety five percent of what was budgeted to receive and the vehicle license fees was at thirty nine thousand, seventy four dollars and that's eighty three percent received so far, so we're, I'm pretty good with that.
As a reminder to people who have other vehicle fees, we now put DND stops on after a period of time if you don't.
Yes.
Very good.
That, that shakes things up quite a bit, we win here, so it's a good thing.
Any questions for Ms. Smith? I'll just say thank you for that, I know it's a busy time of year and uh, and again, thank you, congratulations on a great audit report last month and I know it's been a, a long time coming and well done, so. All right, very good, uh, police chief, I think we've heard enough from, no, chief.
Uh, thank you, council, uh, vice mayor, um, again, I just want to thank you all for the support, really appreciate it. Um, I love this town and I want to see it thrive, so. Um, so in my report, I just have a few highlights, um, the two officers, Roque Cap and Catch Polly have been great. Um, they're both great assets to the department and community. Um, that was evident with the coffee with the cop. We didn't have a great showing, but I feel like, you know, even just one community member coming to sit down with us for coffee is better than done and at least we are getting together with someone.
Hmm.
Uh, we had eight people come out, uh, to talk with the cop. Um, I also want to highlight last month, uh, the Dayton Market was doing their appreciation day, they got together with me, wanted to include the police department, so we put together a touch of truck, which was huge event, we had tons of kids, uh, parents, um, and they even, with the weather, we had, sort of had sprinkling and stuff, we still had people in the wind and the sprinkling of their kids in the cars and playing around with all the equipment, so it was a great event. Uh, and I'm sure we posted pictures on Facebook, you get better at Facebook, by the way.
We said it's a great model, let me tell you.
Hmm.
Uh, I will highlight um, Officer Claus campaign we were doing. Uh, it's getting out, it's advertising businesses, I keep moving it back and forth between downtown, the Dayton Market, um, when, when everybody's open. the Dayton Market, when, when everybody's open, so it's getting a lot of shares on the Facebook page. It's not taking off the way I want it to, with people taking pictures with them, but at least it's bringing some things to town for people to see it. Aubrey Aban is a weather person at WHSE, she's commented on it, and she keeps on sharing it all over the place, so it's pretty cool. And other than that, if you have any questions about the report, let me know, I'll answer those.
I just add that that Officer Claus was one of Justin's great ideas, enthusiastically proposed. And not only was it his idea, he made it at home and he painted it himself. I even asked his wife if she painted it.
I'm not very artistic, so.
Wow.
Came up pretty well, so.
It's cute. When he sent me the picture, I was sure she, it was like that she had done it, but no, he did it, so.
And we are about to film a holiday campaign. Lieutenant Hooker was the Grinch, and we're gonna do some, you know, some campaigns for Don't Be the Grinch this holiday season. You know, another way to kinda get the town involved and bring some, you know, notice to the town of Dayton, you know, for fun, and we are, we're gonna post this first video here pretty soon.
Not cranky.
No. Holiday spirit, we'll see the first video of the city. While they were at shows, the company, so.
Sounds like, that's on Facebook?
We're gonna put it on Facebook.
We're, we're hoping to put it on TikTok, which is why we did it, cause we want Maggie, Maggie the young person.
I was gonna say, we lost everyone else here that enjoyed it, yeah.
So we're gonna do that, TJ's off on the seventeenth, and we're gonna be together on the seventeenth and do all the filming of each scene, and then we're gonna post video on the Facebook page. So it's a little fun, hopefully it's well received and it's funny and people like it, but it is coming, so.
It is, it is.
I can't wait, Debbie, you better share it so I can see it.
We should start barring TJ in the spring for a radar check.
Okay, yeah. And also, I will note too, that TJ is volunteering, he's off on Saturday. He's volunteering his time, he's gonna be at the Dayton Market. They asked if he'd come up and do pictures with the Grinch.
Oh, wow, very good, alright.
Kids, if they'll let them, a lot of kids will cry around.
Yeah.
It is
So it's a, it's a lot of fun. We're trying to do a lot more with the community and businesses, you know, it hasn't been great economically, and we're trying to boost.
Well, I want to
The other team.
Any other, any questions for Chief Trout? Keep it up, sir. TJ's looking a little too Grinch-like though, that's eerie. Yeah. It's great, but it's, it's a little too real.
My favorite picture though was the Baby Yoda ones.
Oh, wow.
That was cute.
Yeah, very good. Public Works, Ms. Lawrence.
I would just add that TJ sends, Justin and I group text all weekend along with his new Grinch.
Oh, boy.
He is, he's, he's taking it a little too seriously these days, but, yeah, Public Works report is on page twenty-four. With Justin's Touch a Truck event, he corralled Adam into giving up his Saturday morning as well, and we took the dump truck with a snowplow on it up there. And like I said, I'll say it again, our, our team works well together. Adam didn't hesitate to say he'd come do this event, that Justin was working with the businesses on it. Unfortunately, they were just about done finishing paving in front of the Dayton Market when it started, but they finished up pretty quickly that day. Anyway, obviously, they've gotten everything ready for winter and have the decorations up. Any questions on that report?
Roll right into water?
Water report is on page twenty-five, same thing. We are still working on Harrisonburg, not only on the line to Silver Lake, which I'll need to talk to the attorney and bring back to council an agreement on any, what we're gonna charge them to tap into our line at Silver Lake, and, and then an agreement with what they're gonna charge us. We have agreed that we'll put a meter, we'll have to install the line, we need to put a meter up by Walmart and just pay as we use it, not a guarantee like we have with Silver Lake. But if there's ever an emergency and we need water, we can take it off their line at by Walmart. And if there's a catastrophe, we're all out of water, then we're out of luck.
There you go, at least you can.
Otherwise, I do not recommend us guaranteeing two million gallons of water if they don't have it. If there's a catastrophe, Walmart, somebody will have to shut down.
Aside from any post-apocalyptic questions, anyone else have any questions for Ms. Lawrence here?
Just so you know, Lucas will be taking his class two licensing exam next month. We're a class three facility, we don't need class two, but it never hurts to be better educated. Jennifer has a class one. In the past, I had asked Adam to get into class two, so he's doing that in order to better himself and to have better education. Jennifer is getting ready to take her pesticides exam. We no longer have somebody who can train the other people who need their pesticides, so she'll get the higher level, and then everybody else will train under her and get theirs. But Conrad was that person for a long time, and he's because he's not working, his certification is about to expire, so Jennifer will get that higher level. Any questions on Public Works or Water?
Saying none, moving on to community development report for Ms. Hall.
My report is on page twenty-six. I don't have anything to add, and the items for consideration, Manager Lawrence already took care of those. So unless anyone has any questions, I don't have anything else.
Pretty good. Ms. Hall, thank you very much, and you gave us a reprieve on the plant commission this month, but I know we will be quite busy, January twentieth, mark your calendars, folks, a nice long plant commission meeting, so, thank you. Alright, very good. Ms. Lawrence for economic development report.
Sure, the economic development report starts on page twenty-seven. I've gone over some of it already, and there's the others. I do want to say we did run out of candy, we ran out of candy about the time we hit College Street.
It was right at my dad's.
I kept telling people, other people have candy behind us, well, nobody did, cause it was packed. And it was a combination of or a lot of other people that we've not seen here before, so that's good, and they know where they can go. We hope that they'll come back next year, even if other people have their parades. And the businesses were happy, even though they weren't open or didn't benefit business-wise, they were happy to see that kind of traffic downtown. I did stop by and talk to them on Saturday. Obviously, the attendance was much higher. We went through at least a hundred and fifty cups per hot chocolate before we ran out of cups last year. I think we went through about fifteen, so, I mean, we were using plastic cups that are made for hot chocolate out of the claws. So, and like I said, Santa was very kind to stay, and kids were happy. There were just a ton of people there. We had one negative comment on Facebook about COVID protocol and him and people, but otherwise, I think everybody was just delighted with that. We do have the holiday decorating contest that people can still apply up until today. We have some entries, we have judging that will take place on the sixteenth, hopefully. Some judges are out, we'll see. But we'll, we'll get that. I've already talked about the Wayfind project. The item for consideration is, this is an example where we didn't pass something before the recodification, we have the recodification, we added the fees as an appendix in the code, so we'll have to go back and change the code after this. But anyway, it's, we need to get the registration up for Dayton Days and Red Bud. We would like to start doing online registration, including online payment, and we don't have that capability right now. The only thing people can pay online right now is the water utility, and it goes through a special program. In order to absorb that extra cost for us to do online, and the fact that we haven't raised a cost, my report says the fees haven't been changed for at least ten years, that's Dayton Days. Red Bud fees were adjusted in two thousand and fourteen. But anyway, we'd like to add ten dollars per event registration fee. Leah's done a ton of research, we're actually, for the big events this size, we're still lower than a lot of people for, than most, and in line with other festivals, but ten dollars after more than ten years, we think it's fair for people to have the convenience to go to submit their application and their payment online. So we would need council action with a motion on that, if you want to change those fees. And we can do that, because it's for a festival, we can do it without advertising like we would with the budget process. If it were, if we were changing another fee to only for Dayton Days or the, the ten dollars? Ten dollars would be for both festivals.
Okay. What's the fee down for Dayton Days?
One hundred sixty-five.
One, exactly, two sixty-five.
Two sixty-five is if you get a double space, you save a little bit of money by getting the double, but yeah. And Dayton Days, I wanna say is seventy-five?
I read, but I mean, what, seventy-five? Yeah, what's it now? You said it's seventy-five?
Now, seventy-five?
Seventy-five. What, seventy-five now? That's not bad. They're still making the killing.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's fair and it's to cover costs, yeah. And, and, and any questions? Now, look for a motion to approve the vendor fee increase by ten dollars for both Dayton Days and Red Bud Festival. Alright, for, motion by Ms. S, second by Mr. Walls. Alright, roll call vote, Ms. Hall.
Alright, Ms. Hoover.
Hi.
Ms. Esther. Mr. Seward.
Aye.
Ms. Mathias.
Aye.
Mr. Walls.
Alright.
Vice Mayor.
Aye, motion carries. Very good, thank you very much, Ms. Lawrence. Any other items for update? Okay, then we're on to the town attorney report, Mr. Bowman.
I'm pleased to report, I have nothing to report.
Alright, excellent, alright.
I, I talk about staff a lot, but Jordan is so easy to work with, he's so responsive, and he he works with Chris and I, very responsive, very intelligent. If he doesn't have meetings, we're gonna find that for us, and I just, kudos, and
I don't normally get that sort of appreciation on a meeting, so.
There you, yeah.
No.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. I really enjoy working with your staff, we get a good group.
And thank you very much, there, Mr. Bowman. Yeah, it's been great to have you as a regular fixture here, and looking forward to another prosperous year with you. Very good. Any questions for Mr. Bowman, before we get to committee reports? Alright, you're off the hook easy, well. Very good, committee reports, economic, community development, just echo a lot of what Ms. Lawrence said, and Ms. Crank had also mentioned, it's just I'll just start with saying it's a great time to be in Dayton, and this time of year is certainly no different. This is kinda small town that we all I think, I think most people are just envious when you talk about small-town Christmas, and talk about our Christmas parade, tree lighting, you know, coffee with the cop, Dayton Market appreciation, just a great all-around, you know, community feel, and this is exactly why people love small towns in the holidays. We're just lucky to live here. So, great, all those are great events, and again, good public-private partnerships. And I think that's, that's key, you know, we, we're a community that can work well together and really spotlight what's great about this area. And so to that end, I know we had, we did have a productive meeting at the Thomas House for the, those seeking to the Main Street group slash merchants group, we're talking about, I think, really good ways to, to, in two thousand and twenty-two, to collaborate. And I thank Ms. Crank for, you know, for coordinating some of those efforts, and it was a, I think, a good meeting that held, and we've got some great traction there. I think the summary is try, sort of a trial period next year to kinda work through that public-private partnership and find a framework where we can coordinate both merchants, retail, or civic organizations in the town, so exciting things ahead here, and in January, I'll have a date here soon, but I'll be having another meeting at the Dayton Tavern, so we're glad to hop around there. So thank you very much, Ms. Patel, thank you very much for your participation too. She has been, she is a quiet unsung hero there and attendant everything, and, and you know, when, when she speaks up, you listen, so that's it. But I appreciate everyone's efforts there, and thank you very much, so that's the
Learn how to do Instagram next month. They're gonna teach y'all how to promote your businesses on Instagram. You're having an Instagram class. Y'all wanna get some modeling out to the Instagram world, come, we'll hook you up. Jack about to educate everybody.
There you go, yeah, and I will say that too, that's another thing too, I just really wanna give a lot of credit there to Maggie. She has been an asset here, and it's, it's almost hard to believe, this time last year, we didn't have her. So, just a short lesson of the year, she's really made a mark here, has been really instrumental in, in business outreach and development, and excited for the Main Street, for all the events, so thank you to her for that. And in fact, that's one thing, I know she's working with the Small Business Development Center too, to coordinate some training and coordinate with that merchants group, so.
Can I add about the Instagram? We have a town Instagram page, and I've been encouraging the chief to get a lease Instagram page, which he wants to do, because when you do the photos and stuff, and then the videos, it's better there. And the town Instagram, we actually have three town Instagram pages, because they were set up by different people. And we don't have, not only do we not have the passwords, but when we tried to recover the passwords, the phones that were hooked up for the security issues are no longer in effect, and we tried numerous things, so we, we have another Instagram page. It's not as heavily used, and we wanna make sure that we're gonna be consistent in it before we encourage everybody to switch over to that, but we will be we do post from time to time on Instagram, not as much as we do on Facebook. I think it's discovered Dayton VA now.
You should be able to change your settings on Instagram if it's around and Facebook are underma- and that up, and so they do vote.
But this was set up years ago, and now we, now we tried and tried, and we have all the old passwords and all the phones, and what happened was no, he'll, he'll have no problem, cause he doesn't have one at all. Right, right, no.
Jack understands the algorithms, and now like he's, he's, he said his business had reached like, what, twenty-seven thousand people? So he really understands how to get his product and his business out into the world other than just Dayton, so it'd be a good idea to show up for that one. Because he has a lot of
Comments, yeah, that's good, yeah, and I know Maggie's gonna be attending that too. Ms. Lawrence, any other comments on that, or?
No, we, we, once we set it up on the things that are appropriate for Instagram, we'll post, and I've already told him, you just move the little slider over and it automatically posts to Facebook.
Fantastic.
Yeah, post to Instagram first, I go to Facebook, but not everything goes both ways, like we don't put town announcements and town meeting notices on Face, on Instagram, because it's more of a, it's a different audience and a different
Absolutely.
Medium, and that's where we would put pictures and promote businesses and stuff. We will work on that. Maggie's working on that, she's very good at that kinda stuff, but she's had a few other things on her plate.
Indeed, a little busy there, a little busy.
One thing we brought up at the meeting to make sure that the TV that got put into the farmer's market also has video of downtown.
Oh, absolutely, that was actually part of the agreement.
And try to add that to that, cause can't advertise one, and without the other, we're paying for it.
That was, that was part of the agreement, absolutely, yep.
So that'll be nice.
Indeed, so there you go.
So what they're talking about is we're putting a monitor up at the market and the main area right across from the toy store, they have some space. Maggie will be working on them, on taking slides and making them into PowerPoint, we'll take PowerPoint slides, but make them into a video kinda moving around. The challenge is not putting too much stuff on there that people would have to stand there for a half an hour to see every business, so. Yeah, we'll be grouping things together, and need a map up there and all of that, but it will spur, it really, the market wants to spur, they know that they're the chief destination, that people come to Dayton for untourist stuff in terms of where people here, they wanna make sure that when people come to the market, that they also go downtown and to the visitor center and the museum and stuff like that. So they're giving us an opportunity to, to market the rest of the town and take advantage of the people that come into their place.
Well, we're, it's an opportunity, we're paying for the TV market, so it's a little bit of both.
It's a, yeah. I don't think one of our meetings that we're gonna work together, it's not them and us.
Yeah, it's symbiotic relationship.
Because Jack, a lot of us don't, do not know about the Dayton Market thing, and then breakfast night, I'll have you
And it's truly symbiotic.
I ran into people that were waiting in line at Dayton Days for that Menonite Bakery, and somebody said, I just threw it up from yeah, Buena Vista, because you can't get this here, and I said, oh, oh.
Yeah, wait, yeah, but you can, yes.
I wish they could say through Saturday any other day, and so you're right, not everybody knows, but in terms of, and I didn't mean to say they're the only destination, in terms of the people who come there as a destination, they wanna make sure that they're including everybody. I think they very much want to partner with, with all the other businesses, so.
That's a goal in two thousand and twenty-two, indeed. Very good. Yeah, on that note, just shop local, shop Dayton, there you go, they're in the holidays here. One last weekend push, but, and I just also knew that, I know on the calendar, next, this Saturday is Reefs Across America Day, and Fort Harrison will be hosting, I think, from one-thirty to three-thirty, an open house and right after the reefing ceremony at the cemetery, so keep that on the, on the calendar. Unless there's any questions, I'll just roll right on, I guess Mr. Digest's doing the finance report, so Um, unless there's any questions, I'll just roll right on. I guess, Mr. Digest's doing the finance report, so, uh, um, anyway, uh, nothing major to report, other than we're planning a, a meeting, uh, before the next, um, council meeting to cover a, a good bit of ground there. So we'll, uh, and Ms. Smith's been, and Ms. Lawrence have been warned, we'll, uh, be a little longer conversation, uh, talking about more treatment plant finance options than planning for, uh, hard to believe, but the, uh, next year's budget, um, start prepping that schedule. So. Any questions? All right, Mr. Seward, Infrastructure.
So I'll jump back in on the, we met on the seventh, uh, over the water treatment plant drawings and such, which Ms. Lawrence covered. They came in, on time this time. So we'll go out for, and that pretty much is all we had for infrastructure that day. So, no action items.
Very good. All right. Mr. Seward again for Parks and Rec.
So Parks and Rec, uh, we met on the seventh, um, and had some inquiries and things with the park hours, the parking. So we decided to, uh, set a time. It was actually five o'clock this evening, as Ms. Lawrence pointed out. Uh, two of the residents showed up, uh, have some good ideas. So we will take it back to the Parks and Rec Committee and go from there. Otherwise, no actions for that. Before I say that, I will say one thing. The parade and this little Santa's workshop that Maggie did for the kids down there was unreal. There were so many comments and some people from out of town that that touch she did with that little Santa's workshop really put the icing on the cake. So just kudos to her for the, cause that was kind of above and beyond what she had to do.
So if I could just add to that, not excluding anybody in the room, but last year when we added, went from one tree in the pavilion to the winter wonderland trees. Outside, everybody said, oh, now every year we need to add to it. Susan and Krista last year proposed a Santa's workshop. Susan, apparently Susan proposed a Santa's workshop. Susan's always done the decorating, but Maggie took it over with Susan's blessing and Susan's, uh, expertise and, and did that. So again, it's truly a team effort here. Um, but yeah.
Jim would be so happy. Cause we had planned to take over the workshop before he passed away in COVID to do that for the town. And we, COVID just now for Jim, it's just a static.
Ruth, Jim's wife and his boys and their families were at the parade and they were sitting right at the entrance of Dove Park and, um, and she stayed for the tree lighting and the candle lighting and everything. And she said she, she let me know she would be there every year, making sure that we met. But, uh, yeah, so, um, I made sure that she saw that, cause it's kind of tucked away. Although I'll tell you, if you drive down forty-two or Main Street and you look over, you can see the Crank's house and our house from far away. And you can even at the right angle see Santa's workshop lights through the colored ones. So, um, anyway.
And the snow, uh, juice arrived today. So the machine, did you make, so, floating around our house?
So, yeah, so.
Mr. Yeah, so Mr. Seward.
I'll correct all three ladies that are wonderful. I don't want them after.
Motion is amended. There you go.
Otherwise, uh, like I said, it will go, the hours and stuff will go to the Back to the Parks Rec Committee. Uh, no action right now.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seward. Any questions? All right. Very good. Ms. Mathias, Personnel Committee.
We did not have any committee meeting since our last council meeting. But we did finalize, and I think that has been in Ms. Lawrence's staff report too. Um, we did finalize, um, praying of performance and it's in the personnel file. And that's it.
Fantastic. Any questions, Ms. Mathias? Okay. Very good. Police Committee, Ms. Hoover.
Uh, we did meet last week, that joint meeting with Parks and Rec. Um, we talked about the six officer. The only other, um, thing that we discussed was, um, some policy changes around, uh, police responsibility for, um, some of the cases that they're responding to. But that's kind of an ongoing conversation that we'll be having at future meetings as well.
Fantastic. Any questions for Ms. Hoover? All right. Very good. Any other council comments? Moment. All right. Any unfinished business?
Just ask a question.
One second. Let me just make sure we've got no new business and then new business? All right. Is this related to agenda item or?
Before you trash the chairs, cause there are some nonprofits who might recover if they're in a way shake, if you might just put it in a newsletter and just say, either whatever, the first Tuesday they're gone, but they're gonna be saying blah, blah, and then they're not, just in case there would be a nonprofit.
We can put them on, we can put them on Recycle and some of the other sites that people chat.
And I wouldn't keep forever.
Very good. Thank you. Very good suggestion, Ms. Crank. All right. Any other questions, comments? Thank you all for making it through the last meeting of the year and, uh, Happy New Year and a very Merry Christmas. Thank you very much. Uh, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Ms. Estes. Second.
Second.
All right, I get Ms. Mathias. All right. So, all right, all up there?
Hi.
All right. So move. We are adjourned under ninety minutes.
Thanks for coming.
Listen.